All right, good morning and welcome to this Phillips County School Board Work Session for the hiring of a new superintendent. I'm going to turn it over to Andrea Messina.
Yes, thank you very much. We have got a number of things to review with you because next week is a big and exciting week. And you should have received the responses to the written and video questions. We're not going to do anything with them here today, but I know that you will review them and take notes on them. So that when you have your interviews next week, there are questions that you might want followed up on or anything like that. So those you should have already received. We're going to review with you today, really the process for next week, all of the sort of elements that are hanging out there. So that you all feel confident in how we're moving forward. I'm going to let John start with the schedule. After we talk about the schedule, then I'll talk about the actual interview itself, the public interview, and the private interview and how we're going to work through those. So we'll start with John and the action schedule.
Great, thank you, Ms. Messina, and good morning, everyone. In your packet, I believe you have the overall schedule for the two days. Wednesday, May the 11th, and also Thursday, May the 12th. If I could just kind of run through and touch on some high points. Kathy this morning indicated that one of our district co's, Ms. Webly, will be replaced with Keith Mastro-Dice. Yes, I think she had a conflict with that day. So he is taking her place. And of course, our out of area candidates, I've communicated with them several times. They're all set up to come into the hempanan on May the 10th. And then on Wednesday morning, we did know that y'all have an earlier commitment that morning. So we're going to kind of kick off the morning with the three finalists. Instead of doing school community tours, we have modified that a little bit. We're going to go with kind of department informational meetings with each of the candidates. We realize and recognize that schools are in the middle of testing. It's a very important week for them. Traffic in trying to get to different places, certainly here, can be a challenge. So after some discussion, we thought it was best, and it would be a great opportunity for our finalists to really interact with the district administrative leadership teams at each of the departments. They'll be meeting with like human resources, facilities, and operations, finance, several other departments. So that morning from nine to 10:45, the three finalists will be in kind of their department meetings. I think that Ms. Cook has it set where each finalist will be in an assigned conference room. And then your department's administrative leadership team would come into the conference room and meet with those finalists and present their information. And it would be kind of an information sharing. Each department will kind of give an update of their status, a kind of a state of the union update of their department, and then have some interaction with the finalists. And I think that'll be very, very valuable. Then at 11 o'clock, the board has their first interview with finalist A, Mr. Hendrick. After that, lunch will be provided. I believe Kathy that lunch for the board members will be in the board office area on that Wednesday.
Lunch for the board members will be in the board office area, yes.
Right, and then we'll have the finalists in the, I think, the cabinet conference room right here, okay. So we'll break for lunch, and then after lunch, the board would interview finalist B, Mr. Michael Ramirez, while the other two candidates are again in their department meetings with the leadership teams. And then from 3:00 to 4:15, the board would interview Dr. Hembrook, while the other two candidates are finishing up their department meetings. Then from 4:45 to 5:45, we will have dinner with the board members, certainly invited along with, and I believe Ms. Cook, that some of the directors from the foundation who are sponsoring the dinner will be in attendance as well.
They've been invited.
Okay, very good.
I haven't heard the RSVP yet. They have not been invited?
They have been invited. They are not attending. I don't have anyone attending.
Oh, they're not attending? Oh, okay.
Okay.
So it'll just be the board and you can...
Board members and the finalists and their spouses, and FSBA will be there as well. And right. And after dinner at 6:00, we kind of kick off the community meet and greet. And as we discussed at the last meeting, the first segment of that community meeting greet will be, and that will be held in conference hall. The first candidate would more or less come to the microphone as the other two candidates are in a holding room. And that candidate would give a three to four minute intro of him or herself. Then Ms. Messina will ask that candidate two questions that she has collected kind of through the course of the day from persons who may have submitted. I think that sites already have been set up for members of the public to submit questions. After we finish those questions with the first finalist, then we'll rotate in finalist B, let him go through the same exercise, and then finish up with C. That should take probably 20, 25 minutes, 30 at the most. And then after that, we'll kind of have the rooms set up to where the finalists will kind of go to their corner of the room in conference hall and just mingle with the public who are attending. And of course, that session would be streamed live. So members of the public who can't come physically to be at the community meet and greet, they could view it online. That will kind of then culminate the activities for Wednesday, May the 11th. And then as we move to Thursday, May the 12th, start off the morning with your one-on-one interviews, and that schedule at the bottom reflects that. Is there, at this point, is we're really ready for next week? Does any board member have a conflict with their schedule that we might be able to adjust? Or does the schedule look good as of here? Okay, all right, very good. And as I did promise the board, I did make, if you're not too comfortable with this schedule that we just talked about, I have made kind of a personal schedule for each of you for the two days. And that might be just a little easier for you to follow. That has been beneficial for some of the boards, so we'll certainly get Ms. Carter's schedule as well. That's kind of a quick, you know, one glance at your schedule for the two days. And again, I just really want to appreciate working with Kathy and Ms. Cook. We, I think, we're really set for next week. Some details have been worked out at the last moment, which there always are. But I think we're excited and ready to go.
One thing that just crossed my mind is, should we invite the people who have been here and talking to the superintendent candidates for the lunch? Because they will be kind of tied up for the dinner. They'll be tied up all day. And then also coming to the meet and greet. So should we include them in the dinner with the candidates, their families, and staff?
I don't really see any concerns with that, nothing.
Then we may need to move it to, see if B203?
We're already there.
Okay, so there's plenty of room then, okay.
Yeah, we have plenty of room.
Okay, good.
That would be fine.
Yes, I think maybe, you know, because to expect them to run out and come back is real tight.
Anything else on the schedule? Okay, yes.
It's not necessarily about this, well, kind of. Are we going to advertise that the community can still email the board their comments about the search?
Yeah, what we have, go ahead.
Right, and I will say too, Ms. Edman, that the evening of the meeting greet, we'll actually have a hard copy form that we'll have available for any of those persons who come, that they can kind of make their departing comments about each candidate. And I think that, I believe that Beth and her folks are going to kind of publicize the event really well. And so there would be that chance. But as far as a site, I don't know if there's a particular site that the public could submit.
Not necessarily a site, but just saying, if you'd like to provide additional feedback, email board@pcsp.org.
We can certainly do that. Or sometimes we set up like a survey link, very similar to like a survey gizmo, where they can just submit it all there, and then it all comes together. It can be that the people who show up can do it digitally, or people at home can do it digitally, and it'll funnel into the same place. So I'll get with Ms. How today and go ahead and set that up so we have it available. Because people, some people won't even see the meet and greet, but they'll watch the interviews, and they'll have some comments or some input that they want to share. So we'll set that up. Thank you.
I was thinking too, maybe when Beth pulls this together, she can put a note on the website, student's portal, if you have any final feedback, please contact board members so they can get that access also.
They can do this or directly email board members, we'll coordinate that.
Right, thank you.
Anything else? All right, so the next thing I want to walk you through is the actual Wednesday, May 11th board interview process. You should have received a document that starts with superintendent search finalist interview, candidate name, it's got like a little, there you go, you got it, yeah, notes page. Looks like this. No? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm here yesterday. I'm just in our packet. Stapled out of order, the one right there.
Yeah, that's it. She's missing the front page is the problem. That's the problem. There we go. That explains that. So what this is, is what we call the script for how the public interview will go. You'll notice that each interview is listed at 75 minutes. We're going to have Chair Long have the same opening comments for all three of the applicants. She will allow each of the applicants an opening statement. Then we'll move into student achievement questions, and as you continue, you've got all the question opportunities listed. We don't have the actual questions listed yet. In the same way that I worked with you last week on your question for the video or written responses, I'm going to work with you this week after today's meeting to come up with four potential questions that you might ask in that public interview. What this worksheet will do, and you'll have three packets, if you will, of this worksheet. So it's going to essentially be your notes packet for the first interview, your notes packet for the second interview, and your notes packet for the third. So what I'll do is I'll work with Dr. Carr to get her four questions, and I will list them out and leave a space where you can take notes. Then the same thing will happen with Ms. Long. All her questions will be here with a space for notes. Ms. Edman, Ms. Kane, all of you will give me your questions in advance. We'll put it into this little workshop, just like you know how principal interviews are, and you've seen those types of packets before. What I will provide for you after today's meeting, when we talk one-on-one, I have probably between 20 and 25 questions in each of these categories. And I will give them to you. You don't have to use those questions, but they can help you to start thinking about your category. You'll get with me, we'll come up with your four questions, I'll put them in here. And then the morning of the interviews, I'll give each of you the packets to use. We'll follow the same format for each interviewee. It'll start with the chair, it'll go to student achievement, then culture. It'll go through the same questions for every applicant, so that you have the exact same questions prepared. But what the applicants will hear from Ms. Long is that each board member has nine minutes for their thematic section. How they answer and how much time they take will determine how many questions they get. Board members will be prepared to ask up to four questions. But if they spend a lot of time, you may only get to two questions with one applicant, but three questions with another. That's, that's the applicant's time management responsibility, because they know how many questions are there, and they know how much time they have. So what'll happen is I'll be working with your chair. Like if Caprice, if it's Caprice's category, and the person is taking too long, I will make a note with my little card that says... So she knows we're going to move from Caprice's category to the next category, and she'll just say, "Thank you, we're going to be moving to the next category now", even if the person doesn't have the opportunity to answer all four, because we have to keep it moving. I don't want answers to one person's questions to take up the time away from somebody else. So we have to kind of keep it moving. So I will be kind of time managing that with your chair to make sure that that moves along. At the end of each of the interviews, there's an opportunity for the applicant to have some closing... There's time for them to have some closing statements, unless they've used too much time. And we try to be a little flexible. If they're in the middle of a question, the chair might say, "You've got about 30 more seconds to finish this." And then if they go long, you know, there's a little bit of a buffer there. So it's up to seven minutes at the end. But if they've kind of gone over, we'll back up to five or four or whatever. Because 75 minutes is 75 minutes. We can't give one applicant 90 minutes and somebody else 75. We have to be fair to everyone and treat them all the same, so we just keep it moving. And that's part of my role is to kind of, kind of keep it moving. And then when they're finished, they're done, they'll leave. You guys will take a quick break, and then we'll give you the second package so you can take notes on the second applicant. We'll walk through the whole thing again. So it'll be very structured, but it'll also be fair and equitable to each of the applicants. We'll be there the whole time. They will be bringing the applicants in. We'll be making sure everything's okay. I'll be managing you all in the time. And you'll be surprised at how quickly the time goes. When I work with you on your own questions for the board interview, what I will also provide for you is the full question bank. I think there's 170 different questions broken up by your thematic areas according to your strategic plan. So you'll have all 170 questions so that you can start preparing for your one-on-ones. You don't have to use my questions, but they're there to help you in case you want to. Or in the public interview, or on the video, or in the written responses, maybe the applicant said something and you want more details. That'll be the kind of question you ask, anything like that. But our goal is to provide you with enough to get you started and be available to you over the coming days if you want to run some questions by us. We do have one document that is in your packet, questions not to ask. I'm going to let Bill reference that document right now.
Thank you very much. In your packet, we have a document that says questions that should never be asked of applicants. And I'll touch base on that very quickly. Just in summary, the first question regarding age, we'd stay away from that one. The second one is religious preference, essentially. The third relates to heritage areas, we'd stay away from that one. Work of spouse is the fourth area. Family life relates to the fifth, avoiding questions about family life. Number six is about arrests. So I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment here when we get to talk about background checks. Number seven is health-related questions. Avoid the health-related questions. And then number eight, eight is talking about salary and debt and so forth. And again, those, the salary certainly will be negotiable with the attorney and whoever the board selects to help negotiate that. And then also debt, that's something will come up in background checks. Then homeownership is nine. And finally, 10 relates to family and children in that particular area. So we recommend that you look through these and make sure you avoid questions relating to these areas right here. Any general questions on this area?
I will say this, the applicants, you will get a feeling for their family priorities, because many times in their introductory comments, they're going to tell you their family priorities. But there's a difference between them sharing and you asking. And that's why you kind of, if they share it, that's fine. If they don't share it, we just caution you, because what we're trying to do is keep you out of any crosshairs that are unnecessary. Almost always, especially when they bring their spouses with them to these events, you will get to know their spouses. You will get to know, in some cases, I'm not sure, in this case, if people are planning to bring children. But when they bring children, you'll get to know their children. They'll talk about their family, because typically their families are very important to them. But that's different than you ask. Did you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, I do. First, I was going to say exactly what you just said, Andrea, and that is, you should not ask about that, but nor should you stop them mid-sentence if they start offering things about themselves. And by the same token, they should not ask you these types of questions either. And if they do, you can just politely redirect the conversation and then take whatever mental note you want to make. But certainly, there are going to be, some of this will come up.
Yeah.
But obviously, with respect to the ones that are protected categories under federal and state law, we want to stay very clear of those.
And you will get to know the applicants. I mean, you're spending two days with these people. And it's amazing, even in an interview setting, public, private, a meal or two, you really do, you really will get a feel for these people, which is important for you, because you're going to have to be working with whoever you select, and you need to know kind of what the dynamic is and how that person interacts with others. And our goal is to provide you as many opportunities to see different interactions so that you can really get a wide view of how they're going to respond in each one of those different scenarios, so.
We work very closely with Mr. Kupersky, so if you have any questions of us or Mr. Kupersky, please ask on those.
Do you want to go ahead and go into the background?
Sure. We have, because of the circumstances where we have an internal candidate, we have, are working again with Mr. Kupersky. Background checks are available in his office, and we encourage you to go through those background checks with the attorney. Also, we have, through Mr. Kupersky's office, he has ordered the personnel files of all of the applicants. So again, because of the circumstances with internal candidate, those are available through his office. So sometime I would make an appointment with him and review that information. If you have any questions about any of that information, we're available, or so, Mr. Kupersky.
The only thing I would say to that, and I don't think I'm speaking out of turn here, is that everything that I have seen, I have no, no issues regarding either of the three, any of the three candidates. And so we are still waiting on some of the out-of-state personnel files. And human, human resources is also using some of the professional certification checks, because they have access to those databases. And so we have not seen anything negative on any of the candidates at this point. And I'll just leave it at that. If any of you want to talk to me further, you can give me a call or see me after the meeting today.
And I will say, the three finalists that you all have selected to support what Mr. Kupersky has said, I would call it clean. They've all come back clean. That's not always the case with our semifinalists and finalist pools. So I feel very good about this particular set of applicants. We haven't seen anything that raises concern or interest.
That's correct. And the last thing I would say is just to reiterate what you've said at prior work sessions. And that is, once we make an offer to somebody, they will undergo a level-two fingerprint background check that is deeper than what we are doing right now. So just be aware of that. But nothing we've seen thus far causes any concern.
Because any offer is a pending offer based on all of the criteria that you use for making your selection for all employees.
And we can't do that check until there's an offer of employment. So we're doing the best that we can in, as wide as we can and as deep as we can. Questions?
But I'm sorry, if I can just one more time. I would note that all of these people have been employed by a Florida school district.
Yeah.
So they went through the Florida background check. Granted, some of them are, there's a gap at least with one of them, since he worked with Florida last. But just to give you a little bit of assurance, I would think that most of that would come back clean, unless something happened in the last, you know, period of time.
Questions?
Do you have an estimated time of when you will receive the human resource file from the out-of-state candidate?
I wish I did. I was just speaking with Ms. Messina and the gentleman earlier before the meeting, and I said, "Florida is truly the sunshine state", because other states' public records laws are closer to the vest, I'll just say, than Florida. And so we may not get everything that we would get from a Florida school district, but we have made those requests. And I will work with the, through Ms. Messina, who can help me work with the candidate if we're having difficulty, because they, of course, can obtain anything on their own personnel files.
Other questions? Okay, then, once we've gone through the interviews next week, and you guys are doing on Thursday your one-on-ones, which you don't turn those questions into me, that's your stuff. But please remember, everything you do is a public record. So you're going to want to maintain your notes and your records, that sort of thing. But you don't have to give anything to me. Sometime on Thursday, before or after your interviews, I'm going to want to touch base with each one of you before you leave that day and walk through the meeting for the selection. In the same way that you have sort of a script for how the interviews are going to go, I'll have with me a script for that meeting so you guys can see how the conversation will be structured so that you all will be able to have conversation, exchange your ideas about the finalists, and make that final selection. But I want to walk through it individually with each one of you, make sure you have, you understand exactly how that meeting's going to go, exactly what that process is going to look like. But if I give it to you today, it'll distract you from next week. So let's get through the interviews, and then I'll give it to you at the end of the interviews next week. Okay? It's exciting, we're moving forward.
Carol, I have one question about that. Is it a workshop setting where we come together to make the selection and then take it to a board meeting? Or are you envisioning it all being at a board meeting?
We can do it either way. It's however you guys want to structure it. We have worked with boards both ways. So however you want to do it, even if it's in a board meeting, I would argue you would need to structure that board meeting more workshop-y.
Yeah.
Because there has to be, in essence, what we'll do is, we will start with an overall sort of summary of the process. Dr. Greco announced he was going to retire. Here's what we've done. We had this much input, this many community meetings, you know, this, this, this. We had some finalists, we did these interviews. The whole thing will be re-reviewed for the community. Then we get to tonight's selection meeting. Tonight's selection meeting, what'll happen is we'll talk about each of the three applicants. What are the strengths? Each one of you will have an opportunity to talk about each of the three strengths and questions that you might have. Then once you've each gone through all three applicants, there'll be an opportunity for just kind of round-robin conversation. But we'll ask each board member to speak before a second, before one board member speaks twice. And we'll do as many rounds of conversation as we need to, to kind of see where everyone is. At some point, someone's going to have to make a motion, okay? And I'll have that motion sort of scripted out with a blank. You know, I move that we offer the job of superintendent to blank pending final background checks and give the authority to the attorney and the board chair to negotiate a contract. And someone's going to have to make a motion at some point. When somebody makes that motion, the chair's going to ask for a second. If there's a second, then discuss, vote, whatever. If there's no second, motion fails, do I have another motion? And then somebody will have another motion. We have been in boards, we have been in board meetings, where it's very clear where the board is and who's got majority support based on the round-robin conversations. First motion that comes out, I move that we nominate John Riker. Second, discussion, vote, it's unanimous, John Riker becomes the applicant, begins negotiations. We've also been in a district where it took three motions, three different applicants from the finalist pool. There were five finalists, and they had to come up to the third motion before they ended up getting a majority vote, because it was a motion, a second, discussion, motion failed. Okay, we need a different motion. This time we nominate Bill Vogel, second, discuss, motion fails. Okay, these two can't get a majority. What do we do now? Came up with the third applicant, somebody said, "How about this? Is this a compromise that we can all kind of agree to?" At the time, I was very concerned that that person wasn't going to accept the job.
Yeah.
But he did, and they're very happy with him. So it typically works out in the end. But your job is to work through the difficult conversations, however difficult they may be, to get a superintendent that you all, as a majority of this board, and hopefully more than a majority, can support for the district. But we're there to help at any time. And one of the things I did tell your chair is, if at any time, because she's a member and she needs to be a part of the conversation, sometimes the chair will just hand it over to... sometimes the chair will just hand it over to us to kind of help facilitate the conversation. If she wants to do that, we can do that, she and I are going to work through that process next week, but we're prepared to do that, we do that in many of the other districts, or not, it doesn't matter to us. We're just here to help in whatever way you all need us to help. Okay, so on May seventeenth, your meeting is scheduled for, it's a board meeting scheduled at ten AM. So the answer to your question is, it's not scheduled as a workshop, it's scheduled as a meeting. But of course, you have enough time to change it between now and then if you wanted to. Today's the April twentieth, and that's not until May seventeen. So. I'm sorry. April twentieth is the date on this thing that I have in front of me, thank you.
If I could just follow up on that comment, that's already been published. So we can put in a new publication if we need to, if the board would like, but it was noticed, published as a regular meeting.
Ms. Edmund?
And because that will take place at a regular meeting, that means the public could come and comment, since it's something.
You would always have public comment, yes ma'am.
Let's just go ahead and do it as a, as a meeting, a board meeting.
Yeah.
Because we promise to be transparent. And I think that's very important.
First item on the agenda would be public comment before we even start talking. Anything else?
That won't be the only item on that May seventeenth. But I understand they're bringing some administrative appointments to that meeting also.
And if you wanted to do those first to get them out of the way, probably easier than making people sit around and wait. It's up to you guys to structure your meeting however you want, but if it's, if it's not like a full-on.
They're usually not in the room for the appointment, so I think that could go at the end.
Whatever you guys decide.
Yeah, we are introduced to them after we approve it, the next meeting.
We've actually had superintendent selection in the middle of a meeting before. Budget, 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 choose the superintendent. Things, it was a little bit. Typically, what'll happen during that meeting, once you decide who you're going to make the offer to, the chair will recess the meeting, step into another room, call the applicant, just to confirm that they're still willing to, you know, take the position. Come back in and say, "Okay, I've spoken and we're good to go, let's finish." So, but let me just think out loud for a minute, we've had, sometimes the applicant by phone, you know, they'll put them on the microphone and they'll thank the board, or however that might be. It just depends on the applicant and how that works through. So the last person that got hired was actually in a restaurant with students on a field trip, and so he didn't even answer the phone, because he didn't hear it ring or anything like that. So it just kind of depends on, we tell them, "This is the meeting and here's the time," but, and you might think they're glued to their computers, but the reality is they have jobs and they may be doing other things and might be available, might not.
Dr. Corbin? On June first, we were going to hold a special, and the whole board did not have to be there for the announcements of.
We told, we told the board, we're going to need a special call, the board meeting for June first for administrative appointments. And so.
So it won't be on the seventeenth, it will be on June first.
No, we're going to bring additional things on May seventeenth.
Oh, okay, just want to make sure I had that.
June first and June fourteenth.
Okay.
Is there anything else on contract negotiation that you need to review?
Maybe we can just clarify with the board, since we're sitting here in the sunshine, is there preferences to how you would like that May seventeenth agenda to look? Would you like to do the appointments of the administrators first or after the superintendent? May seventeenth, we're going to have a separate meeting on June first for more administrative appointments.
I think John after.
Yeah, I think people are going to want to hear, want to get the, and then do the appointments, that's my suggestion.
You do have a document that's called Final Steps, in fact, it's attached to the Board Box agenda. I just want Bill to kind of walk through with you how you'll use this reference guide and when you'll want to refer to it.
You're about to make a major decision, and so what we try to do is just summarize a list of what board members should look at and consider before making their final decision. And so we've provided that for you to take a look at. Happy to answer any questions that you might have on it, but it just gives you an idea of all of the homework that you've probably already done and puts it in a format for you.
If you have any questions on that when we're here next week, I mean, we are with you all day on both the, the eleventh and the twelfth, so at any time during those two days, if you have any questions about anything or need some clarification on anything, we're here to help with that. Yeah, so, and we'll be here on the tenth, beginning the tenth, because we do meet the finalists at the hotel. Typically, we sit in the lobby and wait for them to come, so we can make sure that they have everything they need, give them their schedules, make sure they have onsite paper, what they need, bottles of water, whatever else that they need, and we're there for them. Yeah.
Andrea, I will say too, the similar to the individual, it's similar to the individual schedule I gave each board member. I also prepared individual schedule, I've already sent to the finalists, so they have that as well.
All right, what questions do you have about next week?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I would like you to go back over the first thing you covered.
The notes pages.
Right.
All right, so let me ask you a question, you used to be an administrator in a school, correct?
No, well, I was a substitute.
Okay, did you ever participate in any of the interviews, like, community interviews for principal or anything like that? Okay, typically, what you would get would be like a little packet that has the interview question and a space for you to take notes. That's what this will serve for you. However, you'll notice under your name, which is on the third page, it just says one, two, three, four. We don't know what questions you're going to ask yet. So maybe before you leave today, or via phone, over the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours, you and I will confer on what four questions you're going to want to ask in that public interview. I'm going to give you some sample questions that might get your brain flowing on that category. And then, once you lock in on the four questions you're going to be prepared to ask, I'll fill them in here, one, two, three, four. So that for each applicant, you'll know all the questions from all your peers that are going to be asked, as well as have a place to make comments. But not everyone will answer all questions, like the fourth question may not get asked by anyone, or it might, I don't know.
I was, I, I heard you say you had a, a bank of questions.
Yes, sir.
And we may also have questions, I just wanted to see.
Yes, before you walk out the door today.
You're given those bank of questions, and my questions may be.
Correct, or they may not, and that's fine too, you can use your questions.
Okay.
Well, the press isn't here, so I'll go ahead and give you questions right now. Well, then I won't. But I do have questions to give you, and at that time, we'll review them. What else do we have?
Just for clarification, we're not trying to keep these questions from the public, we're trying to keep them from the candidates.
Well, they are public information, that is correct, they're public information, we just don't want people to ask for them, because we don't want them printed, correct?
You said, "Never mind," it's because we're trying to keep the question.
Correct, we did have in one county, a blogger that printed all hundred and twenty-five questions, and then we had to come up with new questions for the board to use, that we only gave them that morning, it was, it was a bit of a challenge. So we're trying to make sure the board has the resources they need, but that we don't tip our hand to any, including an internal applicant, that might have easier access to things. And that's really what we're trying to do, is keep everything even for all applicants. All right.
I think we're done, we're good, we're good.
Question?
Good.
All right, so then, just as we did last time, if each of you can kind of talk to me one-on-one, we will lock in some details on your question categories.